All right. I'd like to call the order, the regular city commission meeting for Tuesday, 5th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We please have roll call.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yeah.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. Uh, we have everyone acknowledge the pledge of allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic of California. Under God. With liberty. Thank you. If we can have approval of the city commission meeting minutes from April 21st, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Preston, second from Vice Mayor Parnas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously acknowledgement of the city board meeting minutes for community redevelopment agency for the meeting minutes of December 10th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Looking for Commissioner Hudak, second from Vice Mayor Parnas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Uh, approval of the agenda for May 5th, 2020. Do we have any polls or adjustments to this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion approved by Commissioner Preston, uh, seconded by Vice Mayor Parnas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Forward.
Hey, item number one on the agenda is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida amending Article 10 lobbyist registration requirements of Chapter 2 administration providing for conflicts, separability, codification, and an effective date. This is second reading.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have anything, anyone who has emailed in to comment on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, I don't see anybody online who cares to comment on this item. We'll give it another minute. Don't see anyone coming forward, so I'm going to close it to the public, commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Hudak is second from Vice Mayor Parnas, any other comments before we call the roll? Okay, uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
You're now at the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Persons addressing the commission, so I'll state his or her name and address, it may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. Uh, the time for public comment now is for items that are not on the agenda. If you would like public comment on an item that is on the agenda, the time to do that is wait till the agenda item is called and uh, address it at the public comment period for that uh, agenda. And as a reminder, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted. Uh, and Madam Clerk, if you can just let those folks know who have called in or zoomed in how they may, uh, let us know if they would like to comment.
Anyone who has called in via their phone, you need to dial star nine in order to raise your hand. If you are viewing the Zoom meeting via video, once you click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen, you'll get a separate panel on the right and it will allow you to raise hand. It's all the way down at the bottom of that panel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, has anyone emailed in to comment?
No, sir, not for this, not for any items tonight.
Okay. Wait a moment, see if anyone. Okay, let's move forward then. I'm going to close this portion for the public comment.
Commissioner, we are now at the consent portion of the agenda. You do have three items on consent tonight. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to ask your colleagues and, uh, the public if there's any polls, but that's where we are.
Yes, you're. Thank you. Uh, items, uh, two, three, and four, does anyone have any polls on those items or like to make any comments on any of those items?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on item two.
Okay, you want to pull item two? Anyone else? Is there anyone from the public who has sent in to, uh, comment on this, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Preston, nice of your hands raised.
Yes, uh, did I, um, did I miss something with the, uh, first item? Did we vote on that?
No, we skipped it.
Registration?
Yeah.
No, we voted on that.
We, we, okay, I'm missing something here. Okay. I thought we were giving out, uh, the public a chance to speak on it and, uh, okay, all right, I missed it.
Uh, I'll ha- I'll be happy to reopen it after we get through the consent agenda, if that's all right, if we have any comments.
No, I don't, no, I have the comments. No, I'm good, I'm good.
Uh, do you have any polls for item two, three, and four?
No.
Okay. Um, so Commissioner Hudak, you want to pull, uh, item number two?
That's correct.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and address that first and we'll come back to the others. If we could go to item two then.
Okay, item number two is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving the award of ITB number 20 dash 12 dash JW for laptops and associated products to TSI Aviation, Inc. Authorizing the purchase of laptops and associated product products from TSI Aviation, Inc. in an amount not to exceed 111,142 dollars and 20 cents and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Commissioner Hudak, you had a question or?
Yes. Yeah, I got a question for the city manager. It's my understanding this is for 60 laptops, which equates to about $1,800 laptop. Which is a lot of money. And I was just curious, you know, what else is, uh, is the city getting for, for an $1,800 laptop? Uh, and also if you could, um, you know, let me know the, the, the bid process that, that we, uh, we went through just to make sure that we followed all of the proper procedures. Be greatly appreciated.
Excuse me, uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commission, David Santucci, City Manager. I'm going to answer a portion of this and then I'll turn it over to our Chief Information Officer, Ron McKenzie, to answer a little bit more about the, the actual computer and the peripherals. Um, but I will say that this is a laptop that retails for approximately somewhere between 18 to 1900 dollars.
You got to unmute.
We are paying somewhere around, I think it's, uh, 1,400 dollars, a little bit more than that, uh, for the actual laptop. The remaining portion of the cost is peripherals that are associated with the computer. The bid process that took place was an ITB, which means low bid. So every bidder was provided with the specification requirements of, uh, the information technology department. And, um, the, the low bid is the recommended, uh, is the recommend, uh, awardee here. Uh, in addition, uh, you know, the city could have, uh, turned to an existing state contract or other contract for this, but with the amount of computers that we were purchasing, uh, we felt it was best to test the market and see if we could get a lower cost. So once we did get that low bid cost, we did, we did, uh, check that price against the existing state contract. This was actually found to still be lower. Um, I did have questions about, uh, the ability of the, uh, recommended awardee to, to perform. And by that, what I mean is to ship the computers in a timely manner, given that uh, obviously, you know, with everything that's going on with COVID-19, more and more people are, uh, working from home and needing, uh, you know, laptop computers. Uh, we've gotten that assurance, so we, we know that we will receive these, uh, in a timely manner as well. In terms of the actual, um, choice of the computer, uh, and the peripherals, other than just to say that it's important that the city have, uh, standard, uh, computers throughout our system, yeah, uh, that we can easily maintain. And have the correct updates, um, have the correct, uh, and efficiencies as, as we gain with, with support with Lenovo. And for those reasons, that's why it was, it was chosen to, to maintain that as we already have those throughout our, uh, inventory. I'll turn it over to Ron to speak a little bit further.
You, Mr. City Manager, uh, very great summary. One of the other things that is, is in the price is not just a computer, but when a computer's distributed, we also have to buy a monitor for that computer and also a replicator. When we install it, you see those little jacks that you have that has to connect to the computer, that has to connect to that device and to a printer and everything like that. And each type of computer has a different replicator. So as we install them, that's like about a couple of hundred dollars and the cabling that has to come along because the cabling is very different than the older systems that they have. So it's replacing the entire, um, system that's in front of each one of those 60 people who will be getting those devices. So it's more than just a computer. In addition, we also make sure each one of these have a bumper to bumper, three-year warranty. So that means if anything drops, cracks, or anything like that, um, we're able to simply send it back and get another one.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Are there?
Motion to approve then.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak and a second from, uh, I believe it was Vice Mayor Parnas, is that correct?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, uh, before I call the vote, is there any other questions or comments? Uh, anyone from the public, uh, comment on this, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't see any hands being raised. I'll close it to the public. We have a motion and a second. Uh, I, before we do make that call, what is our expected life cycle on these computers? I know you said we have a three-year, uh, warranty, but what is the expected life cycle on this?
Actually about four years, sir. We have a, we developed in a, a four-year rotation plan for replacing, uh, laptops. And, uh, that was something literally that we came up with last year, so it's supposed to last us four years.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could, uh, do roll call for this item, number two?
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Okay, you're now at the remainder of the consent agenda, items three and four.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that's written in for items three or four?
No, sir.
I don't see anybody whose hand is raised for this item. Should say, uh, Commissioner, if it's all right with you because it's a consent agenda unless there's no other further polls, we can do both three and four together. Is that all right?
So.
Okay, uh, any comments from the commission or staff regarding these items? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Vice Mayor Parnas.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hudak. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving the submission of applications to the Broward County Mobility Advancement Program for transportation surtax funds to provide funding for the Southeast 13th Avenue and Southeast 15th Avenue Bridges Rehabilitation Projects and providing for an effective date.
Madam Clerk, did anyone write in for this item?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't see any hands up. Uh, staff, we have any comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I do have, um, Priscilla Sagalnic who would like to, or I'd like, I'd like her to give a presentation if you don't mind.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Priscilla Sagalnic, Assistant Director for Engineering and Operations. Uh, tonight before you, we have an item requesting, uh, support for an application to, uh, Broward County for the surtax program. Uh, if you could advance to the next slide. Uh, the request is for a submission for two applications to the surtax mobility advancement program for municipal rehabilitation and maintenance program, uh, projects. And these two projects are, uh, anticipated at Southeast 13th Avenue and Southeast 15th Avenue Bridges. Next slide. Back in, uh, November of 2018, the voters approved that 30-year, 1% surtax for transportation. It took effect in January of 2019. Uh, these funds are up to 122 million in municipal capital rehabilitation and maintenance projects and community shuttles. Uh, the component that we're here to discuss tonight is the rehabilitation and maintenance projects. Uh, the evaluation criteria was developed by the county and this prioritizes the projects based on need and equity. Uh, the evaluation is based on the condition of our existing facilities, our project readiness, uh, socioeconomics of the city, roadway needs, and the funds received for municipal capital projects. So what that means is that, um, based on the funds that we will receive through the capital program, uh, they will determine based on equity, the amount of funding that we will receive in the separate program, which is this rehabilitation and maintenance component of the surtax fund. Next slide, please. So the city has two eligible projects. Uh, these projects are the bridge rehabilitations at Southeast 13th and 15th Avenue. Um, and this is based on, uh, the requests that were made, uh, for this current year transportation surtax plan. Both of these projects have a documented need and they have condition assessments that were prepared by the FDOT and the annual bridge inspection reports. We've prepared some estimates and the estimates are consistent with what had been in the original plan. Uh, in the original plan, we had requested up to a million dollars, 500,000 for each of these bridges. Um, and we can, um, we can, uh, make a request up to 20% of that estimated total cost in accordance with the Florida statute for this program. Next slide. These are, um, the bridge locations. Uh, if you're familiar with the area, this is in that, um, the neighborhood known as the Cove. Next slide. And, and this is what we're talking about tonight, the needs of these bridges, uh, Southeast 13th Avenue Bridge. Uh, we have some substandard railing, uh, and substandard guard rail. Uh, so what we're looking at doing is upgrading that to be crash, uh, compliant railing. Uh, in addition to that, uh, in the second photograph, we're showing some erosion that's occurring on the approaches to the bridge. Uh, truly, a bridge should have a concrete approach in each direction. Uh, so part of the improvements that we're proposing is to build concrete approaches to the bridge. Uh, and a third image that you see there, um, it's a little difficult to see in the image, but the seawall has actually failed under the bridge and has separated and is allowing for some erosion to occur from behind that seawall. Uh, so the repair there would be, um, uh, some seawall repairs and crack spalls and delamination that's occurring on the underside of the bridge. Next slide, please. On Southeast 15th Avenue, um, here we're talking about seawall repairs, as you can see from the image in the first photograph. Uh, that is a coral rock wall and, uh, there are significant cracks occurring in the wall. Uh, so we're talking about making a seawall repair that would replace portions of the seawall. In addition to that, we're looking at, uh, repairs to crack spalls and delamination to the underside of the bridge. Uh, second image shows some damage that occurred to the underside of that girder. And, uh, lastly, on that last slide, you do see the very nice guard rail and retaining wall. That was the work that occurred last year. Uh, but here we're talking about constructing concrete bridge approaches to the bridge, um, to make those concrete approaches, um, erosion-proof, uh, and keep, uh, arresting that erosion that's occurring on the approaches to each bridge. Next slide. Our next steps, uh, we intend to submit application by May 16th, the, the deadline. Uh, these projects will be prioritized and ranked by the county on the project-specific criteria and applicant-specific criteria. Uh, the oversight board and the Broward County Board of County Commissioners will determine the eligibility of a project by Florida statute, um, as defined for the surtax program. And, uh, the city will need to execute an ILA for the municipal R and M projects. And upon execution of the ILAs, um, we should be released to be able to design and construct the improvements proposed for these two bridges. Final slide, please. So tonight we're asking, uh, we're requesting, um, that the city commission authorize the submission of these two applications, uh, for the proposed rehabilitation projects at Southeast 13th and 15th Avenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a question regarding this, Priscilla.
Yes, sir.
When we had the issues with closing the 15th Street Bridge, I believe it was, and repairs that took place, there's a lot of public discussion, a lot of public feedback and what we wanted to do with those bridges. Is this project consistent with the feedback we receive from the public and the neighborhood as far as what was desired with those bridges?
Uh, there, there were a number of options that were thrown out back when the 15th Avenue Bridge, uh, had been temporarily closed. Uh, really what this project is to address are those items, uh, that are deficient in the FDOT inspection reports and to correct those items, um, in the inspection report. So basically just to make these bridges whole at this time. So really it doesn't go into addressing anything more than that. Uh, we're not talking about, uh, total bridge replacements. We're not talking about adding any additional components to the bridge such as, uh, pedestrian or bicycle accommodations at this time. Uh, all we're talking about doing is just making those basic repairs to the bridge that are needed at this time.
Okay, so.
If I may, Mayor. Thank you. And, and thank you, Priscilla. That, that's exactly correct. This is just to, to repair the bridges, uh, to a condition, um, that will get us uh, our ratings back up on those bridges and, and the existing configuration as you see today. Obviously during the time when 15th Street was down, there was a number of options discussed, um, either by staff or by the public, um, which couldn't, which included many different things. Go, making that, those bridges, um, meet today's standards, which frankly would cost, um, probably two to three times more than what we are, what we are, are, are looking at today. Making those bridges pedestrian only, making those bridges obsolete and removing them. I mean, that, there's options all over the place, right? But what we're presenting here today, like I said, is just to repair those bridges to, um, to the standards that we need them in, in the configuration that they are in today. We are, we are hoping that, uh, once we get through the COVID, uh, situation a little bit more, we're able to, to hold more, uh, public workshops and we can get some additional feedback from the residents on what they would like to see ultimately with those bridges, if it is something different than what we are proposing here tonight. I know we could certainly adjust. Uh, but unfortunately with, with, um, the deadlines that we're faced with in order to get this, um, to get this in the, in the, in the chute, so to speak, um, we've got to get it approved as is today, which again, I think is probably the most, um, benign option, obviously, because you're going to, you're going to get what you have today in, in just a, in a, in a rehabilitated state.
Um. Commissioner Hudak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick questions. Um, the first one on the Southeast 15th, uh, Bridge. Um, the, the first picture you had of the seawall, are we going to be repairing those cracks or are we actually going to be replacing, uh, that part of the seawall? Because I'm not sure that a repair, uh, would last that long.
No, that, yeah, the seawall would need to be replaced in its entirety. Actually, what we're proposing is, uh, driven sheet tiles and concrete caps.
Um, the second, and I, I, how long would these repairs take? And I presume they would not be done concurrently, or they wouldn't be done at the same time. They, they, we would not close both bridges at the same time.
That's correct. We would do one, then the other and phase it accordingly. Um, really these, these, um, improvements should take no more than a year to construct. Um, and, uh, per the surtax plan, uh, that, that is our goal is to construct these improvements within that 12-month period.
So, oh, so are you saying that each bridge would be closed for a year?
No, no, I'm saying that the maximum that, um, it basically from design to construction, our, our duration is 12 months.
Okay. Construction you, you anticipate would take how long?
180 days, six months.
Six months. Six months. Okay.
Priscilla, um, on, on the 13th Street Bridge, uh, when you're heading north, approaching that bridge, I believe there's a giant, there's a large dip as you get towards that bridge. Is that going to be part of this repair also?
Yes, sir, we're going to rebuild, uh, uh, the approaches with concrete approaches that'll arrest the erosion that's occurring under the bridge um, and provide for flumes for adequate drainage, uh, to keep the, uh, the abutments from being undermined.
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, was there anybody who wrote in on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Uh, my, one final comment on this, I'm, I understand that we have deadlines regarding this surtax and, and the way the rules are, you have to get your projects in. If you don't, you don't get the money for it. And it, and we're faced with the situation of, there's a lot of discussion on what to do there. Uh, we knew we had to make an immediate repair based on the action that we had that caused that bridge to be closed. There are immediate needs to get that up to par. Um, I'm a little concerned with spending good money right now on something we might completely change once we get more public feedback on this. And I felt we had talked to that neighborhood and said that we would have that opportunity. I think it might be sending a weird message that we're doing repairs on it. And yet we may change it in the near future. So is that throwing good money after bad? But I also know that this money coming in from the surtax, um, if we miss this opportunity, we might not be in a situation to be able to repair those bridges for quite a while. So that's kind, that, that for me is a little bit of a dilemma that I have. Uh, Commissioner Preston?
Yes, uh, I'd just like to know that as these repairs are being made, will the, there'll be an increase in tonnage of trucks, uh, that will be passing over them, the large trucks that, you know, will be going over these bridge. Uh, I don't know where it is now, but will there be an increase, uh, in the tonnage capacity?
Right now, both of these bridges are load rated at 12 tons. Um, that is unlikely to change. Um, we are, we basically will have to do a load test after, specifically on 13th Avenue Bridge, uh, because we will be adding weight to the bridge with the new, uh, retaining walls. Um, so we will have to run another load test and then, um, based on that load test, we will have to sign the bridge appropriately based on, uh, the maximum tonnage. But it's very unlikely to be able to increase the tonnage. Uh, it would only go down.
So, uh, we're not going to have a problem with, uh, our rescue and emergency vehi- vehicles going over those bridges, is that correct?
They're, they're not allowed on the bridges currently.
They're not?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, commission? I'm going to close this to the public, not seeing anybody coming forward in the public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Hudak is second from, uh, Vice Mayor Parnas. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
You're now at comments by administration and legal.
Okay. Um.
I have some comments tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Sheroka, we'll start with you then, if that's all right. Um, City Manager will go with you next.
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know the city has been getting a number of calls about business closures, facility openings or closings. Um, so I've been asked to provide a brief overview of the current state of state and local restrictions with respect to a lot of these items that we're getting calls on. So I'll go ahead and give that, um, brief summary now. I'll try to be as brief as possible and yet answer a lot of the questions that we've been getting. So, um, the beaches, that's the first thing. Pursuant to executive order 2090 issued by the governor on March 31st, the beaches in Broward remain closed. Uh, generally that closure is tied to the state of emergency order that the governor issued, uh, a couple of months ago, which if it's not further extended, could end May 8th, although I think it's anticipated that that would be extended. So right now the beaches in Broward still remain closed pursuant to the governor's executive order. Additionally, on March 30th, the governor issued executive order 20 dash 89, which ordered Broward and Dade and Palm Beach and Monroe to restrict access to business facilities, uh, pursuant to a previously issued Miami-Dade County order with guidelines. Um, which was subsequently, um, those guidelines were added to based on another executive order from the governor 20 dash 91, which also added Department of Homeland Security guidelines in terms of what is essential and what is not. So that listing is what is provided within Broward to determine the essential businesses and the non-essential businesses pursuant to the governor's executive order. And then the initial restrictions in Miami-Dade County, added on top of that is the Department of Homeland Security restrictions. And more recently, on 4/29, which was last Wednesday, and this is what's been getting a lot of the media coverage lately, the governor issued executive order 20 dash 112 to go into effect on April 4th, which was yesterday. So for most of the state, excluding Broward County, Miami-Dade and Palm Beach, they are now permitted to open restaurants, retail, museums, and libraries to 25% indoor capacity. And of course, social distancing has to be maintained. But again, that order carves out Broward, Dade, and Palm Beach, um, from those reopenings. And so while other counties may start to be reopened. And so, while other counties may start to be reopening those items, the current state of the law in Broward County is that restaurants, retail, museums and libraries remain closed. Also, under that order, county, statewide, though, elective medical procedures may resume, including in Broward County. Also, under that order, it keeps gyms and fitness centers closed throughout the state. And also, applicable within Broward County and the city of Deerfield Beach, the order extended the existing prohibition on vacation rentals as well. So, that was EO 20-112 issued last week. The night before that was issued, Broward County issued their emergency order 20-08, which provided for the limited reopening of public and private parks, nature areas, boat ramps, marinas and golf courses, subject to certain standards and restrictions within that order. For example, all require CDC adherence for all those uses. And with respect to public and private parks, I think the, the critical issue or limitation there is that it's supposed to be for passive use. In other words, you know, no large gatherings where you're, you're playing, you know, a pickup basketball game or other types of more active uses. And again, social distancing is required and there are specific standards for those items. For example, there's a whole list of regulations if you want to open up your golf course or your marina that need to be adhered to. Also, in that Broward County order, it addressed residential pools, recreational amenities while leaving commercial pools closed. It did provide for limited reopening of residential pools and certain recreational amenities under certain conditions. Because we've been getting a lot of questions, I'm just gonna state the primary conditions to address that. One, they'd be limited to current residences. Two, the capacity of those pools is 50% capacity max. Three, six feet at least minimum, social distancing. Four, that the pools be supervised to, during the opening hours of those pools to ensure compliance with those restrictions. And also, that any equipment, railings, chairs, that they be sanitized on a regular basis. Or if they didn't want to have the resource, if a community didn't have the resources to provide for such sanitation or cleaning, you could, the community could remove all of the, you know, the furniture and equipment altogether and avoid that. Also, within that order, they clarified the restriction on facial coverings. For essential services and those providing essential services, the face coverings must be worn during in-person public interactions. Additionally, for members of the public, while they are engaging and obtaining essential services, they're supposed to wear face coverings as well. Additionally, anybody involved in food preparation must wear face coverings. And then, the, the county order also provided for the proper discarding of PPE properly, as the city had taken that action, I think, a couple of days before that in our order. So, I think those are the key restrictions that, that are currently in place. And some clarification on, you know, why others are opened and not, you know, businesses in Broward versus other parts of the state. And, you know, of course, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudak, you have a hand raised, you have a question for the.
Yes, sir. Yes, so Anthony, a couple of clarifications. So, as the city commissioner, as the city, we are bound by these restrictions. We do not have the authority to, to make our own decisions unless they are more restrictive than the current orders by the Governor. Is that correct?
Yes, you could be more restrictive. That's correct.
Okay, but, but we cannot be more lax. We, we do not have that authority to be more lax.
No.
Do we have any sense of when businesses here in Broward County will be open, when the beach will open? Do we have any, any kind of insight as to, you know, what's gonna happen in the next, you know, 15, 30 days, what, what have you?
Commissioner, I think that's probably, Anthony, if you don't mind, I could take that question. I know it's not necessarily legal, legal in nature. And so, Commissioner, I think the answer to that is that no timeline can be established for any of this reopening. It's not, it's not based on time, it's not time-based. It's, it's based on the science and the numbers that associated with COVID. And so, now, I'm gonna talk a little bit about gating criteria and when I, I need to speak. And, and that's, you know, this is, this is based on the science. This is based on how we perform within a 14-day period and if we continue down that path. So, when will beaches open, when will businesses open? You know, no, no day, no day or time can be provided at this time. I will say, I think we're getting closer. But we're in a very unique position here in South Florida. I mean, between the tri-county area, we hold a third of all the cases here in Florida. And just by virtue of our, our population, our density, our demographics, our suburban environment, our, our urban environment, we're very different than the rest of the state of Florida, which, which is why specifically we were carved out of the Governor's initial order. So, we can't put a timeline to when businesses will reopen or when, you know, when the Governor will allow for that and when the Governor will allow for the businesses here in Deerfield Beach and, and the rest of Broward County and Dade and Palm Beach to open. But I know that those conversations are happening. I know that the numbers are being closely looked at by healthcare professionals to, to guide, guide everyone in, in making a, a smart decision for, for, for reopening and what phase of the reopening it should be.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Preston, do you have a question?
Um. I would, I just wanted to say that, that we all got the information from this past weekend when the, the boat ramps were open and there was a lot of activity. So, I would like for us to get ahead of this so that when there is, we have the ability to open the beach, that we actually now began to consider any of the challenges that we might have. Maybe we want to think about a time that the beach is open, that we, if, if we have the ability to open it, maybe initially, until we can figure it out, that we have some sort of restrictions, like opening the beach from a time to a time. Not a full opening, but a soft opening might be a benefit to our community.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna save my, this comment towards the end, but I think this is more appropriate during this discussion. I'm sure, like the rest of my colleagues, you've all been inundated with calls from residents acquiring when the businesses and the beach and other amenities in the city are going to, to open. And, and I think the city attorney did a great job outlining that. But my comment is basically a little civics, you know, 101 as to, you know, why can't Deerfield Beach do more? And, and basically, just think of it as the, the totem pole. You know, the city exists at the pleasure of the county and the county exists at the pleasure of the, of the state. And that is the pecking order. And we are at the bottom of that pecking order. And so, we have to abide by the regulations that come from the county and from our Governor. So, we can't go it alone and, and, and nor do we. But that's, you know, a lot of the pressures I understand that the business community is experiencing. And, you know, I'm part of that and I am suffering like everyone else as well. But until we get the go-ahead signal from the county and, and the state, there is very little, if anything, that we as the city can, can do. And so, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that pecking order. It's not that we're not advocating for our residents, because we most certainly are. We are talking to our county commissioners and our state representatives and, and the residents and understanding the concerns going on. And we are relating those. And I think that we will have good feedback when the time comes as to how to open and what the regulations and the criteria should be. I know the city manager participates quite frequently with the other city managers throughout Broward County coming up with that plan going, going forward. So, we are very proactive, the five of us as the elected officials and our staff coming up with that plan going forward. And we know and we feel the frustration and the pain that is out there. But there is a pecking order and a criteria that this must go through. And I want to make sure that that's just as clear, how that works in addition to that the five of us are out there fighting every day for you.
Vice Mayor Parnas?
I had a few thoughts about the beach opening. And I have a lot of questions from a lot of people about when we open the beach. I understand that you and our city manager are in touch with the other mayors. I think it has to be total joint operation, and I'll tell you my thoughts on that. Suppose Deerfield alone were to open its beach. We got permission, if anybody can open the beach, and we're the only ones that open it. Can you imagine all the people in Broward County crowding on our beach? So, social distancing can't be maintained. Or we're closed, then Fort Lauderdale opens up. It has to be done to stop overcrowding by doing it together in, as one force, so that one particular beach isn't so crowded that it can't work. That, that's my thought on it. And I hope that's what happens when the Governor says you can open your beaches. We do it in a consensual way with the other mayors so that we don't have one beach in the county taking all the residents of the county at one time. I, I really feel that would be harmful rather than helping people. So, I, I, people ask me about that, and that's how I explain it, that this will be a joint venture so that we don't have to shut the beach down because of overcrowding again. When we do it, we want to do it correctly so that our residents can enjoy our beach, people in Hollywood can enjoy their beach instead of coming to Deerfield to dip their toe in the water. So, I think we're on the right path. I know that the discussions with the other mayors are constant, and that's a good thing. Because working together, we can minimize the damage.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Preston, again?
I think what Vice Mayor Parnas is saying is, is some really sound advice. However, that opportunity has been missed because right now, there are places in Florida where the beaches are open and there is no social distancing taking place. And so, you know, what you have now is places where you can do one thing, travel to somewhere else and something entirely is different. So, until we're all doing the same thing, we're gonna have these challenges. When the beach does finally open, will we be able to maintain social distancing? What does it look like when we open the beaches again? That's gonna be a tremendous challenge for us to be able to monitor and, and to make whatever adjustments is necessary. But in the state of Florida, everybody is not doing the same thing. Social distancing isn't happening everywhere in our state, unfortunately. And so, we just got to make sure that we know, whatever we do in the city of Deerfield Beach is not going to put us more at risk. To me, that's the key thing, that even if they open it up, it becomes, to me, the responsibility of our, of our administration staff to say, you know what? We can do this, maybe we need to look a little bit more closely at what we do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Shoroka, do you have any other comments?
No further comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. At the previous meeting, I did mention that we would have to have a discussion tonight regarding the Fourth of July. And so, it is time to have that discussion. I want to provide each one of you with a bit of information regarding the event so that I can put everything into context here. So, if you'll allow me, please. The total estimated cost to hold our Fourth of July event is approximately $80,000. The expenses come from both the CRA in the city. The CRA generally contributes, or excuse me, is budgeted this year for $85,000 of a contribution towards the event, while the city expenses are $15,000. In revenues, we typically get around $20,000 in sponsorships. So, the total cost of the event is around $80,000. We anticipate this year that we would have somewhere between 80,000 to 90,000 people at our Fourth of July event. And if you've attended the Fourth of July event, you know exactly what 80,000 to 90,000 people looks like on our beach. So, we talked last week briefly about needing to make a decision in terms of how we should move forward and that whether or not we should hold our Fourth of July event. So, I need to provide you a little bit of information in order for you to provide me some feedback. So, first and foremost, the deadline for us to order our fireworks from the vendor is May 15th. So, we have up until 10 days from now, which we will not have the opportunity through a regularly scheduled commission meeting to meet anytime prior to that to discuss this. From May 15th to approximately June 4th, we will be on the hook for 10% of the firework costs plus all the trucking expenses and all the permit fees that are associated. The firework 10% fee is $4,500. And I unfortunately do not have an estimate on the trucking expenses and permits at this point in time. On June 1st, we have to make the call on the Entertainment and Sound Company, which is approximately $12,500. And then, after June 4th, we would be responsible for the full cost of the firework display plus the entertainment and the sound company. The total cost of the fireworks is $45,000. And as I said, the Entertainment and Sound Company is $12,500. Then, of course, if we were to cancel the event anytime between June 4th and July 4th, the closer we get, the more we incur expenses as we are starting to purchase and secure barricades and, and supplies and, and the porta-johns and all those sorts of things. But the total cost of the event, again, is, is about, in expenses, about $100,000. And then, of course, we're not sure at this point what the likelihood of sponsorships is given the COVID-19 situation. So, I don't think we can really secure or provide a good estimate on what those revenues would be at this point. So, what, what does that mean and where will we be in approximately two months to make the decision now or sometime in the near future regarding whether or not we should host our July 4th event? I think the thing to understand is, is that the reopen America Plan is three phases. And the third phase, okay, says that there, at that time, there will be, and we're not, as we know, we're not even in Florida's first phase of the reopening plan, right? We were just, Anthony just talked about how we've been carved out of that. We're not there yet. So, we're not even really in phase one yet. But the phase three of the White House plan, at that point, says that there's no evidence of a rebound and that we've satisfied the gating criteria for a third time. And once we do that, even then, even then, large venues can operate under limited physical distancing protocols. Now, that's not defined, but if you think of that in terms of what 80,000 to 90,000 people on our beach looks like, I don't know how we accomplish that. I don't know how we accomplish limited physical distancing. So, what is the gating criteria that we have to meet three consecutive times? Well, it's a series of checkmarks. And those checkmarks have to do with a downward trajectory of the influenza-like illnesses in a 14-day period and a downward trajectory of the COVID. and a downward trajectory of the COVID-like uh cases reported in a fourteen-day period. We also need to see a downward trajectory of positive tests as a percentage of the total tests within a fourteen-day period, either flat or increasing volume of tests. And hospitals need to treat all patients without crisis care, and we need to have robust testing program in place for at-risk healthcare workers, including emergence emerging antibody testing. Now, here locally in Broward, a lot of the reasons why we probably haven't met uh the requirements for phase one have to do with the last one I spoke about, which I know we're getting a lot better at, which would be the robust testing uh program in place for for at-risk healthcare workers, including emergent antibody testing. It also has to just do with the sheer, like I said, numbers that we have here in South Florida being one-third of the total population of COVID cases here in Florida. So with all that said, the question that I contemplate is, one, we're not in phase one today. Two, when will we be in phase one? How quickly will we get to phase two? How quickly will we get to phase three? And even in phase three, is it viable to hold an event that draws tens of thousands of people to our beach? And so I understand how difficult it is to, uh you know, eh with with the hopes of of what is to come. Um, you know, there will be a time and a place for for these these events. Um, but I don't even see indications of any professional sporting venues opening up by uh July. And in fact, I've seen cancellation of large-scale venues up until the end of June at this point. So with all that information, and of course, I um I defer to to you as the city commission to provide any further direction. But it would be my recommendation to not hold uh the July Fourth Fireworks Celebration this year.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Parnas, uh Commissioner Houdak, then next?
I concur completely. We we had upwards of ninety thousand people last year, eighty thousand, ninety thousand people. Right now, I don't think we should gamble that a miracle is going to happen between now and July fourth. It's not that far away. It's less than two months. Based on that alone, would we want to risk that disease spreading like wildfire with an event with even forty thousand people? Because I have a feeling not everybody's going to show up because they'll be afraid. But let's assume forty thousand people show up on our beach. I wouldn't like to put their lives at risk. And I don't think we should go through the expense on a wing and a prayer that everything's going to be rosy in sixty days. We have no guarantee it'll be six months before we reach stage three. I think it's a bad gamble, and we should cancel the event.
Um, Commissioner Houdak?
Um, I guess the first question I have is, do we have an event insurance?
We do not have event insurance for this event because we have not um uh we haven't, we haven't solidified having it yet or not. Um. But without really knowing the answer to your question, I think the likelihood of us being able to get invent insurance, given the current situation, is probably very low.
And and what if we thought of a a scaled back celebration, not with the music and out with the vendors, but with just maybe with the fireworks, just to celebrate the Fourth of July? Is there there any thought uh as to that?
Again, I think it comes down to commissioner, you know, if we would to just shoot fireworks off the pier, have absolutely no entertainment, uh no food vendors, uh none of that. Um, the thing to contemplate, two things to contemplate there would be, one, still, what kind of a crowd does that draw? And would that crowd be able to operate under whatever phase that we are under at that time? That that is an unknown, that is something that I can't answer. Um, because I don't know what where we'll be in in two months in relation to this uh to this virus. The second, the second thing to consider is without knowing how many people the event would draw. Um, do you still want to spend forty-five thousand dollars on the fireworks without knowing the event drawing the payoff?
Um, is is Commissioner Brimelow uh on the uh in attendance to the meeting? I'd love to hear if he's got any input. Yeah, Chief Brimelow, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's here or not.
I know he's on the uh.
Are you able to hear me at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, um. I I like the promotion. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you consider it a promotion.
Uh, yeah, I think from our perspective, it's going to be difficult, no matter what the crowd size is, to manage any kind of distancing regulation at all. Uh, the the difficulty uh to use Commissioner Parnas's example, even if you were to cut it down to twenty thousand, um putting twenty thousand people on our beach, um it would be impossible. We would have to, we would have to go into it basically knowing that there is no way for us to ensure social distancing.
Thank you, sir. No further questions on my point.
Okay, uh Commissioner Drosky and then Commissioner Preston.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I um, I mean, eh this is not as easy as it sounds. I mean, Independence Day is one of the biggest holidays uh eh for our nation and especially for the city of of Deerfield Beach. I think the answer what to do um is actually pretty, pretty easy. What I would have liked to have seen uh and what what should have been done is this needed to be an agenda item uh with the backup for the residents um to participate and give their feedback. For us to make this decision without their input, um even knowing what I think the decision should be, uh I think is a is a mistake. Uh, and I think to leave the public out of the equation and the ability to input um is doing a, you know, a disservice. So I would feel uncomfortable for being asked to vote on anything tonight, uh although I do have a strong opinion that it should not go forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
Commissioner Drosky's points are are well-taken and and each uh has merit. My suggestion would be, because it is a holiday of uh of of the independence of this country, that we must always keep that in mind. Um, it's really a lot more than about fireworks, although fireworks basically symbolizes, you know, our commemoration to that day. My thing is that I think we ought to have the fireworks. But I don't believe that anybody should be allowed to go to the beach. You have it, and you have it, and people can watch from their homes. Um, whether we want to spend forty-five thousand dollars or not, that's a whole nother ballgame. Maybe we can scale it down somewhat. But uh many times I have stayed home over many, many years. And uh and I was able to watch fireworks from the beach uh at my house. And so it's a consideration, something that we can look at. Not that uh it will be embraced, but it's something that should be given some measure of consideration.
Thank you. I I I will say this, I think if if we we don't know where we're going to be by July fourth. And I and I think there's excellent points that take us away uh from being, having it be anything that it was in the past, and I think people need to get used to that. I think Commissioner Drosky's point is very well put and very well taken that um, you know, this wasn't an agenda item. Um, though I casually mentioned it, and the city manager mentioned it last meeting, that this is something we needed to think about, to know that we're at a drop-dead uh line uh when it comes to putting money down on this is concerning, and I think this is going to blindside a lot of people. Now, it shouldn't be a surprise considering the world we're living in right now. Um, and and the one event that you don't want to cancel is Fourth of July, in my opinion, and but we have to be realistic. When you take the entire population, with ninety thousand people down at the beach, that's the entire population of the city of Deerfield Beach plus ten, a little over ten thousand more coming down in that small area. We had problems with it last year, and we discussed that. Having the fireworks but not allowing people to go to the beach essentially divides the city from those who can view it and those who can't, those in District Three, District Four. We won't be able to see those at all. So I I I I don't agree with that option, though I have a hard time canceling it. Um, I understand why we need to and why we should. Um, physically, it's responsible. Um, so so I am with it. But but I think I would have liked this to have been put out a little bit differently to the public so they could have had a little more comment and a little more um opportunity to uh to give us their feedback on it. So that's where I'm at that. Uh, Commissioner Preston?
Yes, um, I can appreciate your comments, uh Mayor, that people from District Three and and Four would be a hard, hard time. But you know, uh I didn't mention it, but I was thinking about that. You know, if if the public knew that we were having it, it would be relatively easy to drive to maybe the Cove or any location on this side, stay in your car and see it. So there are ways that that it will not divide the city if we choose to just be a a little progressive. And uh if those people from District Three or Four could come to maybe the Cove area or come closer where you can see it. And like I said before, it's not something that maybe we would do, but it just simply gives us a uh somewhat of an option in in difficult circumstances. The whole COVID nineteen has put all of us in a very compromising uh position. And we have to sometime think out of the box to be able to accommodate, you know, uh our residents or accommodate uh uh something that we would like to commemorate like like the Fourth of July.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Houdak?
Like you said, thinking outside of the box, maybe this is just a virtual celebration. I I know we have one scheduled coming up, uh and and maybe we organize it that way to where, you know, we have to do it virtually this year. Um, you know, via Facebook or or whatever the case may be, having the the entertainment uh virtually piped in, having the fireworks i- is just just a an option that it keeps everybody at home, but also allows people to to kind of participate uh in in this type of event. Uh, just a thought. Um, it's like I said, trying to think outside the box.
Uh, Commissioner Drosky?
Uh, so to my colleague, Mr. Houdak, are you contemplating that the the um the fireworks actually go forward? Uh, but that people not be allowed to attend the beach, that it basically be simulcast, if you will, through the city's Facebook page and uh through other social media, that the the fireworks physically happen? Um, but that the public is just not allowed to attend, or that we do some kind of faux fireworks, and that is the presentation? What was your thought there?
I I don't know that you could stop people from going to the beach if you actually had the fireworks going off unless you had all BSO officers there lining it. Uh, it, in my opinion, it'd have to be a a faux, you know, fireworks display, um whether you're piping it in from New York City or have last year's event showing. But I I I don't know that you could, again, we're talking eight weeks from now, but it's not a lot of time. The beaches might be open at that time, but I I don't see how um that Chief said that you could, you know, it'd be like herding cats. I I don't know that you could could contain social distance. And and I don't know that I would feel comfortable having the fireworks go off uh in real time. So I I would think it would have to be some kind of um, like I said, piped in.
Parnas, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Parnas?
That's okay. Either one will do. Um, I do not think I'm going to go back to when I was in the military. I can remember two July fours that we were on maneuvers. There were no fireworks. Nothing changed. But it didn't stop our feeling, my company's feeling in in the woods about July fourth. I don't think America is defined on whether or not we have fireworks at the beach. It's lovely, it's nice, but is it worth risking lives to do it? I mean, we don't have to organize it. If I want to see fireworks July fourth, I can watch it off Coney Island, one of the great fireworks displays. They have it in Washington. They've had it when there were ballgames. They had fireworks at Chase Stadium in New York. So if somebody wants fireworks, they can turn their TV on and find it. But without the physical actual going to the beach, it's not an event worth doing. And since we can't do that, not sensibly, not keeping people apart. Captain Brimelow said even twenty thousand would be impossible to police. I strongly urge that we direct the city manager to skip this year. Because we have to make a decision, what, in ten days, fifteen days? One way or another?
Well, uh Vice Mayor, we we can make the decision at any time, but we start to incur costs the longer we wait.
I understand that. I'm talking about, when do we start incurring costs?
May fifteenth.
Okay, that's in ten days, gentlemen. Can we solve all the problems in ten days? If not, I say we cancel the event for safety reasons.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Preston?
Um, no, uh for anybody to go to the beach and be put at risk for fireworks would not be a good decision. I think some of the dialogue tonight was simply looking at, do we have workable alternatives? And that's all. If we're going to uh start to incur cost, um, and you got to remember that the 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 taxpayers ultimately um will incur that cost. And um if the if if it is the feeling of this commission that uh the danger risk is too great to even consider anything else, then we ought to give the city manager that direction tonight to make um eh make it easier for him to be able to put things in order um so that, you know, we won't be challenged in ways uh it than if we wait. So I think that's where we are.
Yeah. Commissioner Drosky?
This is why, I mean, I don't want to belabor this, but I mean, this is why I hate doing things on the fly without doing the research and having the input from the public. Because um to a certain extent, I disagree with um, you know, Vice Mayor as to the importance of fireworks. If there's an opportunity to do the fireworks without the public being present, that is something that we should consider. I don't know if it's a viable option or not, but we don't have the opportunity to debate that tonight. I mean, it was um our founding father and the second president of our country, John Adams, who in, you know, right after the American Revolution wrote, you know, "I am apt to believe it'll be celebrated," talking about July fourth. "I am apt to believe that it'll be celebrated by succeeding generations as the great anniversary festival. It ought to be commemorated as the day of deliverance by solemn acts of devotion to God Almighty. It ought to be solemnized with pomp and parade, with shoes, games, sports, guns, bells, bonfires, and illuminations from one end of this continent continent to the other from this time forward forevermore." Um, so this isn't something that we cancel willy-nilly. I think there needed to be more some planning into this as to maybe some viable alternatives. Putting ten thousand people at the beach is a mistake, and I understand that. But if there is an opportunity to do something safe without the public uh involved, that's something that we should have had the availability to at least debate. I mean, baseball is considering having games without fans in the stadium. Why can't we debate celebrating the Fourth of July without? Why can't we debate celebrating the Fourth of July without the public available as well? And that's my point.
Mr. Santucci and then Commissioner Hudek and then Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, we, we do have ten days to make a decision. I, I don't know what really changes within that ten days, but to Commissioner Drosky's point, if he feels as though that we need to get public input on this, then we could very easily debate this or allow for additional debate and input from the public next, next week and, and, and handle it at that point. Frankly though, I don't know if public input will, will matter. I mean, if you, what I mean by that is if you look at the position that we're in today, of course, the public can provide input as to whether or not businesses are closed and what is allowed to open and, and when things should reopen, but you know, right now that's being restricted by, by, by the state. And I don't know if we'll be in that Phase Three and that, and that Phase Three position by July Fourth. And that's, and that's why, and I apologize, that I didn't bring this forward as an agenda item because it may not be up for the public to make that decision at that point in time. It may still be that we are under restrictions of the, the, the state or, or, or the county, for that matter, on July Fourth, that would prohibit us from hosting the event. I, I don't know. And that's why it is, it is very unknown. Obviously, we're in uncharted territories of, of relation to COVID nineteen, but we don't know where we're going to be on July Fourth and what will be allowed by the state or, or the county.
Commissioner Preston?
I believe that all of my colleagues tonight have made great points. Points that should be considered. Great points by the Vice Mayor. Great points by Commissioner Drosky. Mayor, you as well. So here's, we're at a point whether we are to say that we're going to have the Fourth of July with participation or the Fourth of July without it. And so that's why I brought up that if we're going to have it, the only way that makes sense to have it is to allow people just to see it from a distance, not getting out of their cars, that sort of thing, and making that available. This commission may choose not to consider that and, and that's fine. But I'm gonna say this. If we are going to err, then let's err on the side of safety. If we're going to make a mistake, if we're gonna make a, if, if someone consider it a bad choice, then let's do it with the safety of our residents in mind. So this is a very tough situation for all of us. We have saw, we have seen presently that the NBA had to shut down its season. That's big. That's huge. We saw the NCAA was just starting the tournament, March Madness was shut down. We don't have a national champion this year, unfortunately. We had a modified version of the NFL draft. In years past, we've been able to see it from a totally different perspective, but not this year. We saw it differently from people sitting inside of their homes. We had to do that because of safety. And so I would just say to my colleagues, if we're going to make a mistake, whatever the situation or whatever decision that we make, some may consider it an error, but let's err on the side of caution, err on the side of safety for our residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Hudek, then maybe we can wrap up our final conversation on this.
Yeah, I, I will be brief, Mr. Mayor. I agree in erring on the side of safety. I think that's very important. I was also in the military, as everybody knows, I was in the Air Force and spent a couple of years out of the United States celebrating the Fourth of July. Basketball, March Madness, baseball, all of these events, you can police not allowing people to attend because they happen in arenas. They happen in places where you have the ability to crowd control. You don't have that ability on the beach. You really don't. I, I think a virtual celebration is, is something that we should move forward with. I, I don't think it should be with live fireworks. I, I, I just think that we do need to err on the side of caution, as much as I hate it. And yeah, I can see the, the fireworks from my house. I, I've done it a couple of years. But I think we are in unprecedented times and we have to make some difficult decisions. And the, the right decision, as Commissioner just said, is to err on the side of safety. And I think that's what we need to do as a commission and as a city, is to err on the side of safety, have a virtual celebration and handle it that way.
All right. Mr. Santucci, do you have any other comments?
I don't at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rucker, where are we at our next?
But I'm sorry, I do, I do have one more subject. I wasn't sure if you were referring to anything to the discussion regarding fireworks. No, but I do have one more thing, Mayor. I apologize. The, the other thing that I do want to bring up is that, as, as many of you are aware, is that, that CARES Act funding did come down to state governments and local governments that had a population of five hundred thousand or more. Obviously, not one municipality in the county qualified for that funding. Hopefully, there is some additional funding that will be coming down to assist local municipalities. But the county did receive that funding. And clarification did come out that I, that I was able to see today on an FAQ from, from the federal government that does say that a county may transfer funds to a city, town, or school district within the county of the county that received those, that, that funding. Okay, so I did want to bring that to each of your attention as the county does have that ability to do that. But they do not have to do that. That's all.
Thank you.
Comments from Mayor and City Commission?
Okay, let's start with District One.
All right, thank you very much. Worldwide, the coronavirus has caused over two hundred and fifty-two thousand deaths. To put that in perspective, when added together, the cities of Boca Raton, Coconut Creek, and Deerfield Beach have a population of two hundred and forty-eight thousand. In the states, over seventy thousand deaths have been linked to COVID nineteen. Almost equals the entire population. It's important, and as you can see by the discussions that we have today, that we take this very, very seriously. Since March seventh, which was the first death in the state of Florida, in the counties of Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach, we've seen eight hundred and twenty-seven deaths, which is more than half of the state and the entire state of Florida. And that's why the governor has put the restrictions on our four counties as he has because we are the most susceptible population in the state of Florida. So we really need to proceed cautiously. And that's what we're trying to do as you see the debates going back and forth today. With regards to District One meetings, we will have, I will have virtual office hours this Saturday. I will have either, you have the ability to see me via a Zoom meeting or a telepho, or a teleconference, whichever suits yourself. And it'll be this, this Saturday, May ninth, from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock. So please contact Erica in order to schedule such a meeting. Over the weekend, our city lost one of our greatest first responders. Retired Deerfield Beach Fire Rescue Chief Dave Harris unfortunately passed away. His son, Dave Junior, currently works for fire rescue. And my condolences go out to the entire Harris family as well as the entire Deerfield Beach Fire Rescue family for their loss. Another loss, and this one is, is near and dear to all of our, our South Florida sports fans. As many of you know, Don Shula passed away over, yesterday, actually, on May fourth. And he is very near and dear to South Florida. As many of you know, we have an expressway named after him. He is the winningest coach in NFL history with three hundred and forty-seven victories. And he is the, the coach that coached the only perfect team, that being the nineteen seventy-two Miami Dolphins. He was a man of integrity, faith, and family. And one of my favorite quotes from his is strive for perfection, but settle for excellence. And if you live that way, you're gonna live a great life, just like he did. Please continue to protect yourself, your family, and your neighbors while continually to follow the state, county, and city guidelines. Mobile testing is now available for a homebound elderly or individuals with disabilities who are experiencing symptoms of COVID nineteen and cannot leave their homes to access one of the drive-up or work-up test collection sites. Individuals may call Broward County COVID nineteen call center at nine five four three five seven nine five zero zero for a pre-qualifying assessment. The call center is open eight AM to six PM, seven days a week. And for those in need, please visit the city website for a list of food distribution locations and testing sites. And stay strong, Deerfield Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. District Two?
Thank you, Mayor. My condolences to the Harris family as well. When I began my career, I worked with Chief Dave Harris. He was one of the officers there when I first began with the city of Deerfield Beach. Without a doubt, he will be missed. He was a part of the building of Deerfield Beach, the, the city of Deerfield Beach Fire Department prior to going to BSO. He was an integral part of all that is good about how we remember the old fire department. So again, condolences to the family. I would like to say to all of my colleagues, you would all, all would have been proud to see that food distribution. People, Mayor, driving through nodding their head in appreciation for what we're doing. And each one of my colleagues, you would have been especially proud of how your city employees performed. They did an excellent job. We should be so proud. I just, I, I took a, I just took a little time just to look around and look at what they were doing. And there was an a, a real sense of concern about what was going on. Everybody took their job seriously. Nobody was trying to be a star. It was seeing people in need and helping simply as much as you could help. It was truly, truly outstanding. I was very proud of our, our, our city employees. So I'm asking our city manager to make sure that our employees know under these extraordinary circumstances that they are greatly appreciated, that each and every colleague and that's what I said to people. That if, there's not a city commissioner that, that is a part of Deerfield Beach that, that does not care. Everybody from our mirror right on down, I know that your hearts are big and you care about your city employees. And so that's important. I have made it my business to support restaurants in District One, District Three, District Four. I've made it my business, whether I'm going to Kentucky Fried Chicken, whether that's Papa John's Pizza, whether that's the Legends Tavern, and so many others. But there's something mission, missing when I speak to my colleagues. District Two doesn't have the choices as far as restaurants is concerned in, in a situation like this. And so we have a decision to make. Are we gonna leave it like it is? I've asked the, for my colleagues, which you graciously allowed the city manager to begin to gather some information on creating a CRA. And I wish it, it could be that, that all of, all of our districts were equal and that there were, that you could tell me about great restaurants in District Two that you visited. I make sure that my wife and I, sometime at a pretty healthy price, to be able to pay, you know, whatever I need to do to support those businesses. And I tell people, I, I told them over at the Legends the other day when I, I got the wings and potato skin, which is pretty good. I told them that your city commission care about you. But there's something is wrong with this picture. So I'm asking my colleagues that we pursue an empathic consideration in trying to change things in District Two with a new CRA. Ambivalence to the current situation will give us exactly what it has, and that's nothing. It'll just continue to stay the same. I'm gonna continue to drive to District One. I'm gonna continue to drive to District Three and Four to help those business people. But I'm also telling you that the residents of Deerfield Beach in District Two are your residents as well. And there's a responsibility on us to be able to change things, to look to change things, or else we just say the verdict is, you will stay the same. It's important that we, we look at these things. And so we're in a tough situation now. I ask my wife sometimes, don't cook. You know, we have the food to do it. No, we need to, we need to, we need to support these businesses. They're struggling. My, my, my issue is, if we watch them go away, will they return? So if it takes for me to spend more money, so what? They are a part of, of our city. But I'm gonna also tell you to my colleagues, District Two is also a part of your city. We need to change it. We need to change it. Because the way it sits now, it is not contributing nor is it benefiting and being an equal part the way other districts are. And I hope you will consider that. And I would like to ask the city manager now, where are we in the process of gathering that information? I don't know if he can hear me.
Commissioner, yes, I, I can hear you. We, we have a great deal of that information. Obviously, with what we've been going, what's been going on for over the past two months has kind of slowed, slowed, slowed a few of our projects down a little bit. I will reengage that conversation, see where we're at, and we'll be able to bring that forward at a, at a future date that I will, I will, I will let you know about soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
District Three?
That's me. Couple of things that I, I'd like to see happen. I got an email from David Santucci about testing at home for those that are sick. I would like to see an effort made to get more citizens in Deerfield Beach emails through our public service department or outreach so that when an item like that comes up, they can be directly emailed. I got the email. I got a hold of Master Management. I got a hold of the presidents of all the condos and homeowners associations. I would think that that kind of information should be automatically sent to every email that people have signed up for getting news from the city. I think it would be a good thing to communicate from us to them, include them as individuals and make them happy because they're not happy right now. And as far as supporting restaurants in all the districts, Ben, I had lunch sent over from the Pickle Barrel today. I believe that's in your district. I believe that's in District Two. No? I, I, I can't hear you. I, I, I can't hear you. It's not?
No.
Whose district is it in on Orp Hillsborough Boulevard and Dixie Highway?
District one.
Oh, is it? I didn't know that. Okay. Then I apologize. But I order from whatever restaurants I want. And I order from many of them very often. In fact, almost daily that to support the restaurants that I enjoy all year round. We want to see them stay in business, and I make an effort. Tomorrow, Century Village is opening up its main pool. I will be there to make sure all the protocols that the city has sent are followed, that they have a monitor, that only residents use the pool, that they stay six feet apart. Nobody can approach the pool without a mask on, and that all the rules are obeyed. The penalty, of course, if they continually allow the rules to be violated, I assume we will shut them down until they do comply. Safety first. And they will open all of their seventeen pools one at a time as they can manage them. Again, it's a safety thing. They must have somebody there to check residence ID, the time limits. Everybody's being given an hour. Then they have to leave to make room, only fifty percent of the capacity. So it's a big job to them. And but it has to get done. And also with my other pools that are common, either homeowners associations or condo associations are doing the same thing. And it's a good thing. It gives people a little more recreation with six degrees of separation. I think there was a movie by that name. Other than that, we still have a problem that I'd like to see a little more police enforcement of people running around the city without masks on. Period. Yet they walk on a sidewalk, they pass people within six feet and are endangering these people. And somehow, it's got to be regulated until this thing goes away. This is a serious disease. I know because my son fell victim in New Jersey. Thank God he recovered. I spoke to him yesterday. He's doing fine. And I'll tell you, it'll take a minute to tell you how serious. Called an ambulance at two o'clock in the morning about ten days ago. You know what they told him? You're not bad enough. One, two, you don't want to go to the hospital. You may never come home. Hospitals, as much as they try to be sanitary, spread the disease worse than the people who aren't that bad. Stay home, drink juice, take Tylenol, chicken soup, and sweat it out. And he did, and he survived. They said, if you were a little worse, we have to take you to the hospital. A majority of the people put on ventilators do not survive. A majority. That's awful. So we have to be vigilant. We have to instill in the people that this is really dangerous. And you don't have the right to risk other people's lives. For the most part, my constituents are following the rules. And as far as office hours, I have them seven days a week. The phone doesn't stop. They call with their problems about the disease and other problems because they had, they need somebody to listen to their problems. That's my job, and I love every minute of it. If I can help someone, it gives me pleasure. So District three is going to survive and survive nicely. I'd also like to know, David, if we can get figures on the city updates on on neighborhoods, victims of the disease, hospitalizations, et cetera. It helps us surprise our citizens in our districts how to avoid getting sick. And I think that's part of the job, safety. And I take it seriously, as I'm sure the rest of you do. Other than that, District three is doing fine.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. District four?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be extremely brief tonight. I I said most of my comments earlier tonight. But I just want to thank Deerfield Beach with a special shout out to my District four friends and neighbors. Thank you for following the rules. Thank you for keeping your social distancing. And thank you for being patient. This is unprecedented. There is no script for this. There is a lot of pain, and we know that, but we are working together and we will get through this. I've talked to more of you than I ever have in my first three years in office during this last month. And there's a great understanding and appreciation out there that this is not over, but we are, we are getting there. And I just want to thank everyone in Deerfield Beach and District four in particular for doing everything that they can and being very patient. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. There are a few things, you know, because we do this remotely, it's a little awkward to do a moment of silence. But there were several losses and and Dave Harris was certainly one of the ones that was worthy of us commemorating tonight. And and I appreciate Commissioner Preston and Commissioner Hudak bringing that up. We lost a couple of other city employees of the past couple of weeks. And the city of Deerfield Beach lost a great champion and someone who worked very hard when it was their job to be one of our representatives on the county, and that was Kristen Jacobs. She was a tremendous fighter for the city of Deerfield Beach and the environment, the entire state of Florida. I was honored to know her and call her a friend and a colleague. And she will be greatly missed, and she certainly left an incredible impact on the city. You don't have to look any further than the right there on Tenth Street in the heart of District two at the preserve that we have right there on Tenth Street. If it wasn't for Kristen Jacobs, we wouldn't have that. So when you want to know what Deerfield Beach looked at like before all this development, all you have to do is walk those paths and you can see what it was like. So she will be greatly missed. The BSO family lost one of their dispatchers while she may not have covered Deerfield Beach. It's it's a terrible tragedy that COVID took the life of Nikima Thompson, who was a dispatcher for BSO. So we, along with the entire BSO family, mourn her loss and and we are thinking of her. Some of the good positive things that have happened, and Commissioner Preston brought this up about the NFL draft. Two of our very own here in Deerfield Beach were drafted, one of them in the first round, Jerry Judy, wide receiver from University of Alabama, one of our homegrown, and I actually work with his cousin, is was selected in the first round of the NFL draft and a a one of the one of the top names in all Deerfield Beach, Jason Strobridge from the Strobridge family, was drafted by the Miami Dolphins. So I get the pleasure of sitting from the sidelines and watching his games when he plays at home here. So congratulations to both those gentlemen, and we're very, very proud. And we are very proud of our city of Deerfield Beach staff. You guys are doing an outstanding job under very difficult circumstances. I can't imagine being on the front lines there, having navigate some of the situations that you are right now because it's unprecedented. So for those of you who worked at the, whether it be the boat ramp or anywhere else, you're out there working in the public and dealing with a lot of the same frustrations that we have phone calls on. Thank you for all your hard work and Commissioner Hudak and Commissioner Preston, outstanding job with the food giveaway last Friday. I I really appreciate you all being out there and doing that. And in our, you and our staff, as you said, Commissioner Preston, we should all be very, very proud. I want to thank the staff for working with the Palms, who had some needs with some residents there who needed some food and were able to provide and put together something and 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 take care of them over there. Donna Nefronzo, all of the staff, Vicki, Placita Card, who just does a phenomenal job. All of you have really done a great job, and I really appreciate you doing that. You know, we thought, we talk about restaurants, there's also others, you know, there are certain businesses that are open. And I I try to hit different areas of the city to support them locally. And if, you know, I I might bypass my local Publix and shoot over to the Food Bazaar over on Hillsborough to support them because it it is difficult out there. And while we are all putting lives over livelihood, we certainly understand the desperate times it is for so many people out there, the unemployment situation with the state of Florida and that entire system, the support that people aren't getting, it's it's a completely tragic. It's 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 quite frankly, it's a damn shame what's going on in the state of Florida and the unemployment system. So hopefully, we can get that, the state will get that moving and be able to get some relief for those residents out there that are suffering through this. And in these tough times, there's a lot of heightened stress. And I think when you are in quarantine, you have stress, whether it's financial stress, just the entire unprecedented situation we have. Domestic violence numbers will spike. So I'm going to remind everyone, we have women in distress here in Deerfield Beach and Broward County. Their hotline is nine five four seven six one 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 three three. If anybody is in danger or has an issue, they have a twenty four hour hotline. That's nine five four seven six one 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 three three. Please call Women in Distress. You can call nine one one if you need safety. But just know that there are people out there looking out for you. And I say that for in honor of Kristen Jacobs, who was a big supporter of Women in Distress. There were some issues that we've had that have been reported. I just want people to know that we're taking a look at them. There were some flyers passed around about a problem apartment building in District one that we're looking into and dealing with. We are dealing with traffic calming issues that we have in Hillsborough. Hillsborough's become, with the light and traffic at certain hours, it's pretty much a drag strip. So I know I'm going to thank BSO for getting out there and trying to help curb that and bring that down. That that's greatly appreciated. It was brought up earlier about what we are doing in communicating with the other mayors and with the county. I I I've talked with our counterpart in Boca Raton, the Mayor, Mayor Singer in Boca Raton. I have weekly conference calls with our northeast coastal mayors from Lauderdale by the Sea, Lighthouse Point, Pompano. We're all in constant contact. And today, just before this meeting, I had a conference call with all the Broward County mayors. Now, there's a lot of frustration out there with this. And, you know, the la, we're bearing a lot of fruit, these conversations, but sometimes the execution is poor, and that's something we have to watch out for. We had asked the county to give us plenty of lead time to let us know when things were going to change, or were they going to come out with something based on the feedback we were giving with just the minor restrictions that were lifted here recently. And that conversation took place on a Friday. We asked for plenty of lead time. We got a call about ten minutes before the conference call on Monday, in which they were announcing the new emergency order for Broward County, which had not even been distributed to the cities yet. We're not even complete with the county commissioners to review, which didn't come out until Tuesday, that went into effect on Wednesday. So we have asked them to not put us in that situation again. That's been reiterated by all the mayors. Everyone is looking to do this based on science, based on where the numbers are. I think Mr. Santucci's point about looking at the protocols that have been passed down from the White House and what the decline in numbers, those are the things that are going to dictate where we're going. I would like to tell you that we have a good idea of when beaches are going to open or when the next phase or the first phase of really reopening is going to start. But I'm a little hesitant considering our past history with the county of saying, we will give you plenty of lead time, and then they don't. I do beach from the conversations we have had just today, they're going to be looking to reopening the task force about the coastal cities and talking about the beach reopenings. But we're a long ways from that. That will, I don't believe that that's going to be part of this initial phase that we start opening businesses up. I had requested that staff go out and talk to our restaurants to find out, to to survey them, to find out what their needs are, what their feedback is. Should we start to reopen? Because as you've heard in other areas of the state, they talk about a twenty five percent capacity. That might not work for many of these businesses. Opening up twenty five percent might might cost them more than it is to to just remain closed. And that's basically the feedback we got. Fifty percent is really the magic number in which they would probably be able to work with. Not all of them, but that's been the vast majority of the feedback. And that was something very similar to what we heard from all the mayors in Broward County. Is it twenty five percent is really not going to cut it, fifty percent would. But we are, the the mayors did give directive to the county, and as we know, we are tied with Broward County is tied with Miami Dade and really West Palm Beach. But West Palm Beach is in a slightly different scenario. I was called by Mayor Singer right before, a matter of fact, during the conference call, we were having a Broward County, and said that the Palm Beach County has voted to move forward with requesting that the governor separate them from the Miami Dade in Broward County, I'll say consortium, and allow them to do something very different, which would start a first phase opening, including beaches, as early as possibly early next week. Now, whether the governor allows them to do that, we don't know. But certainly, that's the push, and that's the vote that they wanted to do. Fort Lauderdale has taken steps to come forward with coming up with a plan of what they see for the first bits of reopening, and they've submitted that to the cities and to the county for discussion. And that was part of the things that were discussed, but that has just recently come out. We are a long ways from getting there, but everyone wants to do it right. The worst thing that we can do is start things back up again and get them moving. Watch the numbers spike in which people are in danger, whether it be with people being infected or people actually dying, that we have to turn around and do it about faced. I think that would be devastating for our businesses. So there's a lot of careful consideration going on. You know, Mayor Wholeness has been very receptive to to trying to get feedback. So we're going to continue to have those conversations, and I hope that that will that will bear fruit, and we can have more information for all of you as we get the information. Definitely want to share it with our commission and with the public. This is the latest information that I have. And and again, I I would like to say we have a timeline, but we don't have a specific timeline, but we are moving forward without a doubt. We are moving forward. Speaking of moving forward, the Economic Development Council in discussions that I had with members of that board, after hearing one of our last discussions with the city's need for certain positions that are more in a trade position and and realizing that it's something that impacts not just the city of Deerfield Beach, but other businesses here in in Deerfield, and it would benefit our residents as well to provide them job opportunities as we come out of all of this. The EDC has been, has taken up the task of discussing that, looking for some partnerships and seeing what opportunities there are out there to come up with some suggestions and how we move forward with a program that would help with that that specific type of workforce. We were all set to announce tonight that Launch Code, the second half of Launch Code, would be coming forward to, and I wanted to do a strong push to get more Deerfield Beach residents involved with that. But just late tonight, we've been informed that Launch Code is pulling back their participation in South Florida and the Tampa area due to COVID. And, you know, hopefully, that will change in the future. But as of right now, it looks like they're pulling back from that program, which is extremely disappointing, but considering the circumstances, I, it's understandable. With that, please follow the guidelines, social distancing, wearing your mask, doing every you can to protect each other. And when you wear a mask, I'll give you a little tip. Many of you have these masks right here. You feel the top where the wire is at. You pinch that to your nose, you put it over your nose, you put it over your ears, and you wear it like this. So many times I see people in stores wearing it like this. You're not helping yourself. You're not helping anyone else. And when you go to dispose of your personal protection apparatuses, please put them in proper in the proper place, which is the garbage can, not in the parking lots, not on the ground. We are better than that Deerfield Beach. So stay safe, be careful, and be kind. That's it. Anyone else looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we have a motion for Commissioner Preston, seconded by Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Be safe, everybody.
Stay safe, Bill.